It is 5:03 on Thursday, October 16th, 2025. I'm calling this meeting to order. The meeting is being livestreamed via Zoom and will be recorded and available on our YouTube channel and website for a year. Could I get roll call please?
President Bakatani.
I am here.
Trusty Abdullah.
Here.
Trusty Srinath Chitthi.
I'm here.
And Trusty Katz, I am here. And Trusty you is...
I'm sure she's on her way. Yep.
You think on her way.
What's up?
We think on her way.
We think on her way. Any public comment on closed session? Okay, then we will go straight to closed session at 5:03. Thank you.
If you have comments on items not on the agenda, please turn them in right now. Thank you. And then if you have comments on agenda items, you have until Dr. Kaufman's report is completed, which is about
Fifteen.
Fifteen minutes from now? And I think we'll wait for
No, let's go.
Okay, we're gonna start. Calling this meeting to order at six oh nine on Thursday, November sixteenth, twenty twenty five. It is live streamed via Zoom and will be recorded and available on our YouTube channel. Could I get a roll call, please?
President, no. President Gakotani.
I'm here.
Trustee Abdullah.
Here.
Trustee Sernsitt Todd.
Here.
Trustee Yu.
Yeah.
I am trustee Katz, and I am here.
Thank you very much. I have reportable actions from closed item. So I would like to provide a report on the matter that was discussed in closed session under
One B. Pursuant to California Government Code Section five four nine five seven point one, the board has approved settlement by unanimous vote. In the case of student in the Mill Valley School District, the terms include twenty five thousand dollars in reimbursement for educational expenses. Pursuant to California Government Code, and this is for item one C, pursuant to California Government Code Section five four nine five seven point one, the board has approved a settlement in the case of student in the Mill Valley School District. The approval was by unanimous vote. The terms of the settlement include reimbursement of twenty eight thousand dollars for educational expenses and seventy five hundred dollars for parent legal fees. That is it for closed session. And now could I get a motion to approve our agenda for tonight?
So moved.
Six.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Our agenda is approved, and we will move to public comment on non-agenda items. So
We have twenty. This appears to be on D. Is this D? D one? Okay. So this appears to be duplicate. So there's pink nine. You see? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Eight.
Nine. Okay. And did you want to read your statement?
Yeah.
So nine, that's two minutes each.
Yeah. We have twenty minutes for public comment, right? And we have nine people, so we're gonna do two minutes apiece. Before we get there, I'm gonna read a quick statement. Before we move forward with tonight's agenda, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the strong community interest in the Mill Valley Middle School Modernization Project. There's been a lot of discussion on social media and in the community about the Environmental Impact Report, or EIR. That engagement is healthy, and it reflects how much our community cares about our schools and the decisions that shape them. I do want to remind everyone tonight that oh, to remind everyone that tonight's meeting is not the place to make comments on the EIR. We've already held a formal public hearing and established a process specifically for that purpose. Comments made tonight will not be part of the public record. So it's best to share your feedback through the formal public comment process. That's how your input will be documented, reviewed, and considered. The public comment period for the EIR runs through October twentieth, and all comments will be carefully considered along with a host of other factors, including EIR findings, environmental data, cost, educational programming, and community acceptance, to name a few, before we make a final decision on how to move forward in December. Differing opinions are a natural and important part of any public process, and the board truly believes that thoughtful, And the board truly believes that thoughtful, civil participation will help us make better, more sustainable, and more creative decisions for our students, staff, and community. Thank you for your engagement, your civility, and your continued commitment to our schools. Thank you. With that, we're gonna go to public comments. So the first, we have Andrew Dawson and then Susan Dawson.
All three of us.
Uh, we're here, yes. Yeah, I'll call through. Andrew Dawson, Susan Dawson, and then Boriana Fackler.
Thank you. So I think from my perspective, having followed this online, being aware, I.
Just gonna say, sorry, when you come up, we could start, restart the clock. Just don't forget to introduce yourself and your name and many, and any affiliation with the school or anything. The clock is over there. Sorry.
Of course.
Did we restart it? Sorry. Thank you. Hey, Mark. Thank you.
All right. My name's Andrew Dawson. I'm a parent of an Old Mill Elementary student and a Mill Valley Middle School student. I think, having observed kind of at a high level, the conversations, I just wanted to note that this community has broad values that we bring to all the decisions that we make of environmentalism, of safety, of long-term health, of cleanliness, and particularly focus on our kids. And I know that the decisions being made here can be very big. And particularly the idea of moving a location somewhere else from this site is a big decision. And any big decision has downsides. It has communities that particularly in the short term might, might have struggles, might have new challenges. But the broader interests of keeping our students safe, of avoiding the toxins in the soil here, of ensuring that generations of Mill Valley students to come are protected from earthquakes, from sea level rise, from toxins, from all of the challenges that this site has inherently. I just think we should make a big decision. We shouldn't be using tens of millions of dollars to renovate a flawed site that doesn't fix the big solutions. We should be a community that is capable of making big decisions, of fixing big problems, and actually delivering on the values that we have had and that we espouse in our lives elsewhere. And we should recognize that the challenges that will come from that are inevitable. Every big decision like this has challenges. I understand the Edna community is concerned, and I, I don't mean to minimize that or to pretend that doesn't exist. But we're talking about generations of students to come. We're talking about safety. We're talking about risks, invisible risks in the soil. We're talking about hardening our infrastructure to sea level rise, which we all in this community are concerned about. We see those risks. And we're talking about earthquakes. We have all seen the challenges of earthquakes and the current plan of renovating this site simply doesn't address those concerns. It doesn't further those goals. And the Edna option does. So I just want to encourage the board to think big, to take big swings, and to solve big problems.
Thank you.
I'm Susan Dawson. Here is a parent of a child who loves Mill Valley Middle School. He really loves his teachers and his friends, so I want him to be able to continue to learn with this wonderful group of people. But I am tired and I am sad that this issue is tearing our community apart. The school board is making things harder on themselves and all of us than it has to be. If we as a community could have a little patience, the regulators could complete their review and advise on what mitigation will be required at the current site. We would then know for certain what the plan would be and whether it is financially feasible. If the plan is feasible, those details could be reassuring. If it is not feasible, we'd have no choice but to pursue another option, and hopefully people could make peace with that. The decision might make itself without all this community discord. I am not talking about a long delay. I am talking about a few months to allow the project to proceed in a rational sequence that identifies and addresses each threshold issue in order. This means completing the preliminary endangerment analysis, all three steps, through approval of the mitigation work plan before seeking to approve an EIR. Reversing that order, as you are currently doing, is tantamount to writing a book report before you have finished all the reading. That is, the end of the book often has a surprise ending, a twist, which can then make your report look foolish. That is exactly what happened with this EIR, which is almost entirely about a project that, it turns out, you cannot even build. Please don't repeat this mistake. Get all the data, get all the costs, explain your plan in detail, and only then bring a revised EIR back to us. I implore you to address the requests in the MBMS Modernization Mass letter. Thank you.
Uh, Boriana? And then after is Tracy Urquhart, Anita Sparks, and Sid.
Hello, I'm resident of Mill Valley. My name is Boriana Fackler. And I appreciate this opportunity here to come and have a discussion with you. I'd like to note that the draft EIR discusses a now discarded plan, one that describes a complete rebuild of the middle school. It doesn't offer a lot of details on the preferred option that the board will be considering, which is remodel of the existing site. That said, the draft EIR gives us very valuable insight into the state of the current middle school site. And to me, it tries a significant issues that must be addressed before we can proceed with any plan. In particular, I am concerned about two, with two, two areas of impact. The seismic risk and the threat posed by the sea level rise. The draft EIR demands extensive mitigation measures needed to reduce the significant seismic risk. Those are described for a newly rebuilt, new building. However, the retrofit of the existing building does not plan for any seismic measures. In fact, it aims to stay under the fifty percent threshold as to avoid seismic retrofit. Are you comfortable with this approach? I am not. The draft EIR also describes the challenges posed by the rising sea level. It advocates, I quote, "Regional adaptation and protection strategies would need to be employed to counter this hazard." The preferred alternative does not incorporate such plans, even though the site sits at a particularly vulnerable area. Finally, my concerns boil down to fiscal responsibility. Are you advocating spending north of ninety-five million of taxpayer money on a remodel that will result in nice new facade and new HVAC system, but will not address and improve the seismic and sea level rise challenges?
Thank you very much.
When is the next bond coming? Thank you.
Uh, we have Tracy and then Anita. Is Tracy here?
Hello, I'm Tracy Urquhart, parent of a Mill Valley middle schooler. I first want to thank the tiny dinosaur adding some levity to the night. I support a new school. We can't have our kids in the school as it is. The fly infestation a couple of weeks ago is just another example on top of many, many things. But what I wanted to ask of the board tonight is if there's a possibility for a neutral mediator to provide the community straight facts, nothing based on emotion. All sides are so worked up emotionally. People are attacking other people online. Parents that all have the same fears and want the best for their kids. But it's turning our community into a place that feels unfamiliar and not the reason that I moved here in the first place. And it makes me feel sick when I see this online. I implore the community to work together and not against each other. If an idea presented by a parent who cares about their kids and future generations, and the teachers in this community being safe, instead of attacking that person, maybe engaging them in a way that they can work together. But I think there's a lot of misinformation going around and people saying things that are so far apart from each other. It's really hard for people to come together and, and just talk as humans. And so I just am asking if there's some way that the school board could facilitate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anita? Get an old-fashioned sand timer, maybe. Thank you for waiting.
My name is Anita Sparks and I'm the parent of a fourth grader and a seventh grader. And I believe that was Tracy. I would, before me, I would second her request to maybe have some sort of mediation or an open forum where facts are presented. I agree with you that things have gotten a little bit ugly, maybe a lot ugly. But I wanted to come forward today to stress my support for alternative one. I know I'm not alone in this. And that is assuming that the reports that come, that are done by professionals, give us the information that support alternative one. And assuming that alternative one is fiscally responsible as well. I would urge our community to stop hypothesizing on extreme scenarios. We all want what is best for our children. But the conversation has gotten a little bit sidetracked on hypotheses of what ifs. We will more than likely never have a perfect scenario for a school. Would I like the school to be built not on a dump site? Not, you know, next to the sewer? Yes. Unless what the regulators and what the professionals are reporting back is truly unfeasible, unfeasible or completely unhealthy. I don't really see a reason why we can't just move forward with alternative one and keep this location, which is central to all of us in the community as the middle school site. So just emphasizing my support for that. And hopefully we can have better discord and maybe facilitated by the school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Sid?
Hi again. This is not about TK.
Yes.
My name is Sid Bansnathan. I have two kids, one in second grade and in TK. I started a petition two days ago that's now signed by almost seven hundred people. Our view is that the time has come to renovate MBMS at its current site, keeping the portables here as well, also known as alternative one. We're satisfied with the expiration and mitigation and all the information provided so far and over the last three years. And have full trust in the agencies and experts involved that will ensure that they're not gonna do anything that put our kids in harm, in harms way. We could either continue to spend more time and money to be able to this process, or we could work with the info that we have and make, be executive, make a decision to move forward. Risks of living in the Bay Area include fire, earthquakes, sea level rise, et cetera. And if all of us waited for all of the information to have the perfect scenarios, then no one would live or work here. If we look at the buildings that withstood the last big earthquake in nineteen eighty-nine, specifically in the Marina, which is a liquefaction zone, three public schools survived with very minimal damage. And actually eventually became shelters for the Red Cross. And that's due to the Field Act that was passed in the early nineteen hundreds that hardened the buildings, specifically public schools in the fifties and the sixties, which I believe MBMS was part of that, the Field Act as well. So most likely, in the, in the case of, of an earthquake, this building will be a place of public shelter. So let's let the experts do their job and move forward and stop losing more time and money. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, yeah, Chris. Chris and the last two will be online. It's Ann Dutcher and Christina Mueller.
Hi all. My name is Chris Bailey. I have a middle school student as a high school student. I am respectfully requesting a district withdrawal and recirculate a revised draft ER that complies with SEQA, including an accurate project description and a meaningful analysis of the alternatives. As you all know, I have been involved in this since before Measure G has passed. I am completely supportive of a new school. But I've also had experience of investing in over eight billion dollars in infrastructure over my twenty-year career and see a clear permitting matrix and cost-benefit analysis is yet to be produced on this project. The site is a highly toxic burn dump beside a wastewater treatment plant along the Richardson Bay in a liquefaction zone already experiencing flooding and leaching from the landfill. These are not isolated problems. They compound one another. The PEA describes an alphabet soup of toxic chemicals, two standout, lead. It is two hundred and eighty-eight times the allowable level, methane. It has a high level of exposure, seventy-seven percent times higher than what you would need to actually have explosive methane. These chemicals cause cancer, and we already have leaching to the groundwater. The way the PEA describes this is we are all safe so long as the soil cap remains in place. The students and the staff are safe. I don't want to mix up any of the facts on that. The renovation plan, though, will most certainly disturb some of that cap while our kids are sitting next door in temporary housing. And if it doesn't, it is very difficult to project sea level rise or liquefaction from an earthquake that has possibility and not even a small possibility of disturbing that cap. I want to articulate, the regulators do not in any of their EIR go and make future state projections on that. They are actually just measuring the actual current toxicity that is coming out of a vapor barrier. And even with incremental vapor barriers put in place, it is impossible to project what will happen in the future or the additional costs. The AR is definitive on recommending a foundation retrofit. And we are now going through a process of trying to get an exception to that rule. Further, the cost that over fourteen hundred dollars a square foot for a very simple renovation is extremely high.
Thank you. Do we have Ann online? Ann, can you hear us? You can speak.
Sorry, there. I'm here. Can you hear me?
Thank you. Go ahead. You have two minutes.
Okay, my name is Ann Doiker, and I'm here with my son Jack, who is just turned four. Can you say hello, Jack?
Hello.
And we're gonna change gears a little bit and talk about in support of TK, still outstanding issue, which hopefully you'll be addressing in soon. And Jack's a fan of Sesame, of Dr. Sue. So we have our comment in Dr. Sue Speak. Preschool is dandy with doodles and goo, but TK has glibble and schnoodle food too. With teachers who know how young brains like to grow, through wiggles and giggles and minds all aglow. They build up the heart and the mind brick by brick with a strong TK plan that is sturdy and slick. And here in Mill Valley, it's only fair play that every small learner gets started this way. So picture the TKers with backpacks askew, marching to TK with one untied shoe. Let's give them the start that they all ought to get. Okay, Jack, your turn. What do you have to say? Say yes to TK? The best choice yet?
The best choice yet.
Okay, so thank you. I would just hope that you consider supporting TK for twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven four-year-olds. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Christina Mueller? She's not online? Okay. That concludes public comment. Um, we will continue on with the rest of our agenda. Uh, we have a CSEA report. Is Yiming, I thought, I saw, yeah, I saw Yiming.
Hi. Good evening, board members, superintendents, and district staff. On behalf of California School Employee Association, I'd like to share a brief update. Recently, our chapter held a meeting and elections. I'm happy to report that the members will elect Yiming Lu, it's me, as a president and Wong Loveres as a vice president. And Dietrich Cowherd as treasurer. We're still missing a secretary, but we'll see who want to be a step forward. We want to thank all our members who attend the meeting and took time to share their voices through the voting. Your participation make our union stronger and help us continue working together in support of our schools and community. We're looking forward to working together with the district in a spirit of a common respect, where all voices are heard and valued. Thank you for your time and continuing partnership. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, we have MBTA. Hi.
How are you?
Happy October.
Happy October.
Hey. So I'm Erin Fraser. This is Julie Bremer. We are the MBTA co-presidents. Thank you for having us tonight and every month. Tonight, we want to share that California Teachers Association has endorsed Prop fifty and that we stand with them. And we're gonna say a little bit about what CTA has to say about Prop fifty. So it's a temporary voter-approved measure that adjusts California's congressional map to cancel out five unfair seats gained by Texas through gerrymandering. This isn't just a political issue, it's the issue of fairness and funding for our students. You might be wondering why this matters for us here in Mill Valley. And for us, it's because when our presentation is manipulated in other states, the consequences hit close to home. We've seen critical federal funding cut for special education, school meal programs and essential student support services, cuts that are made to pay for tax breaks for the wealthiest Americans. Prop 50 helps push back on that. California has one of the fairest, most independent redistricting systems in the nation and Prop 50 doesn't change that. It's a one-time exception to defend democratic values when other states are undermining them. And it would expire in 2030. This prop is about fairness, it's ensuring that our, it's about ensuring that our students, our schools and communities aren't punished by the decisions in back room, decisions made in back rooms across state lines. And Prop 50 is democracy defending democracy. It's temporary, it's fair and it's necessary. And we hope that you and our Mill Valley community members will consider voting yes on Prop 50 with educators across the state.
To close tonight, we want to thank each of you for your continued service and leadership. This is especially important now as the community reviews the draft environmental impact report related to Measure G. We know the decisions ahead are complex. Mill Valley educators have been active in community discussions on this issue and we understand the strong public interest. We truly appreciate your dedication to our students, staff and schools. We trust you are carefully weighing all factors to choose the most fiscally responsible and sensible path, one that protects both our educational programs and the long-term future of our facilities. As we've said before, we respectfully asked the board to choose the option that causes the least disruption to students, families and staff while still keeping our campuses safe. We know that the time is spent examining, we know that the time that is spent examining different alternatives only serves to drain money from Measure G funds and precious time for student learning. We need to get our middle schoolers in an updated facility as soon as possible and we need to have enough funds left to build them a campus that's equipped for 21st century learning. We also see that you, our trustees, are committed to a process that is transparent, thoughtful and centered on the well-being of our school community. Thank you for keeping that commitment at the core of your work.
Thank you. I just received an email that Christina Mueller is online. She's not sure why she can't be found. Can we? Oh, I don't know. Stefan Mueller? Stefan Mueller? What? Oh, Welter, yeah, thank you. And if not, then we will move on. Yeah. Okay. Christina, if you can hear us, I'm sorry, we cannot find you. So we are going to please email your comments in and we are going to move on to Dr. Kaufman's superintendent report. Oh. Let's, oh, that's probably her. Yeah. Yeah. Christina, if you're there, yes. You have two minutes.
Hi, I didn't realize that I was under Stefan, so that's news to me. Hi, everybody. You probably all know me, I'm a former Edna mom and a former Mill Valley Middle School mom and PTA member and I'm a current Tam mom and Alto Horse Hill resident. And I strongly oppose putting a permanent middle school on the campus next to Edna McGuire Elementary School. The traffic load in the neighborhood is already overwhelming and was even more so when Edna was at peak enrollment of over 750 kids. There are and were lines of cars down the block all day to drop off, pick up and manage onsite activities. Cars would block, would park for blocks when activities happened at school overwhelming the neighborhood. Parking was impossible for my neighbors. And forget it during Ramadan when the local Muslim center hosts non-stop events for a month overlapping with the school. You could not find a space anywhere close to school. A better solution already exists, renovating the current middle school campus. The site is much larger and thus better suited to a citywide school. Plus it is centrally located, keeping traffic out of the neighborhoods and accessible by major roads. And by the way, I'm active on safe routes to school too. It's just the middle school option where it currently is located is the best option. Please keep Alto Community Streets safe by rebuilding the middle school at the current site. Renovating at the current site is the best option, not just for Alto, but for all of Mill Valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Dr. Kaufman, please, thank you.
Since these days I often feel like a construction superintendent, I'm going to take the opportunity to update you a little bit on some of the construction we did this summer. Next slide. So this summer, we did work on Strawberry Point and Tam Valley Elementary. In this coming summer, we'll be looking at Old Mill and Park. So you can just see generally what the intention of the program at Strawberry Point was. We were looking at priority one programs and this is similar for both, both Strawberry Point and, and Tam Valley, looking at path to travel updates, ADA accessibility, drinking fountains, fire sprinkler systems and, you know, access in and out of the campus with campus fire loops. So that's the overview of the campus. And then I just wanted to spend a little time highlighting some befores and afters. We did the outdoor learning environment at Strawberry Point. So they have a brand new kind of state of the art, beautiful location for outdoor learning. Next slide. We had an upgrade to the play area. So you can see the striping and kids outside playing, which is of course the best part of everything we do here. Next slide. The play structure, again, just another look at the play structure. Next slide. And the path of travel upgrades. So Tam Valley, similarly, we did again, the path of travel accessibility. There was a new Kinder playground structure added, TK Kinder, and then basic replacements on the campus for basketball hoops and backboards, track, updating some of the restrooms there and again, the fire and safety. Next slide. So you'll see the re-striping of the campus and the front entry. You also see that we painted the school, so it's a common color scheme. Next slide. Painting again. Interior painting as well, that was one thing that the school wanted last year when I was, maybe it was my first year here. I guess it was two years ago, really looking at creating some sense of cohesion and internal space that looks the same across campus. So we painted the interior. Next slide. Again, there's the multi-use room and it's new painting. And then the next thing is the outdoor play area, which was actually, it's fun to watch the kids because it didn't open quiet at the beginning of school unfortunately and the kids were all just standing outside watching it. And so they're, it's just, it's great. They, they love it and it's getting well-used at Tam Valley Elementary. So just quick highlights. Again, one of the things we always try to gear towards is making sure our campuses are places where kids are happy and proud. And I think these two projects this summer really provide an opportunity for students to engage in our campus in delightful ways. So that's all I got. I did want to mention that I got a second iteration of informal confirmation from the California Geological Society that they do not believe that deep soil mixing will be needed for foundation here in the interim housing. So that will help inform my recommendations coming forward that we continue to focus on the renovation here at Mill Valley Middle School and the placement of the interim campuses here, which as you know, I've been sharing community-wide and certainly will ask you to approve at some point in December.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, we're going to keep moving on. We have consent agenda next. I have a couple of items I would like to pull from consent agenda and.
You want to table them?
Yeah, I would like to table item number 18 and item number 19. They're the change orders for Tam Valley and for Strawberry.
Those will come back next month.
Sounds great. Does anybody have anything else they would like to pull, to discuss?
You just want to pull, pull them from this month altogether.
From this month altogether. I'm, I asked some questions, I don't have a satisfactory answer yet. So I would like to get that before we approve money.
I see, okay, so it'll go back on?
It'll go back on eventually. I'm not rejecting them, it's just that, it's, it's. Yeah, do I, okay, could I get a motion to, first of all, do I need to explain more of the reason? I'm.
I'm sure we can, we'll get that before next month.
It's technical and financially based and I want to make sure I'm totally clear on it before we approve it. So could I get a motion to table item 18 and 19?
So moved.
Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We will bring those back in November. With that, could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items 18 and 19? Thank you, a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We are now, I, I need bifocals, I keep saying. Student data overview with Director Sprague, thank you.
Welcome, Kate. We decided this year not to wait for the state to release the data, but to share our data now, which will eventually have comparative data coming from the state when the state certifies the data for our school district and other districts. But we wanted to share where we were as academic improvement is part of our L cap metrics as well. So hand it over to Kate.
Good evening, board. Nice to see you all tonight. This is a presentation that should look familiar. We tried to keep the format and structure pretty much the same as we've seen in previous years so that it's easy to compare and understand as we have in previous years. This is a data overview, not an analysis. And we do try to ensure that we bring data to you throughout the year where we talk about the L cap as well. We've been talking about LTAC too, so getting mixed up in my head about the L cap. So we will bring additional data to you, including comparison data, but this is a preview of our district results for this year. Next slide, please, thank you. Again, this is just a reminder of our district priorities and L cap goals as they relate to data and achievement, specifically in our L cap, that all students engage in standards-aligned instruction provided by highly qualified teachers in instructional schedules that ensure full daily access to core or tier one content in English language arts, mathematics, science, social science, social emotional learning and physical education. And then all students are supported by multi-tiered systems of support or MTSS for instruction, intervention, acceleration and extension in all areas of English language arts, mathematics, behavior and SEO. Next slide. So for this year, just some of the considerations, these are similar to previous years. The goal of the data is always to inform instruction and how we can best support students as well as identify any places in our system where we can adjust things to improve outcomes for any specific groups of students that might need it. CASP data is just a point-in-time summative assessment for students in grades three through eight. Individual student CASP score information is available to families through the ARI's online portal and we've sent that to families. CASP is one data piece that show the picture of a student's progress and achievement in Mill Valley. Some other measures that we use are I Ready and this year we're very excited to use DIBBLES for early literacy and literacy skills assessment. Many of our students' demographic groups are small and so when we look at things year over year, often scores fluctuate substantially just due to the small numbers of students in those groups. So that's always important to consider when we're looking at our data. This slide has our ELA achievement by grade. Our overall district percentage of students who met and exceeded in ELA, English language arts, is 83%. And you can see here, reported for each grade, third through eighth grade, as well as the number of students that were tested in that grade representing that's, that grade and then broken down for the four levels of CASP, which are standard not met, standard nearly met, standard met and standard exceeded. So third graders, 77% met or exceeded standards. In fourth grade, 84%, in fifth grade, 86%, in sixth grade, 78%, in seventh grade, 84% and in eighth grade, 79%. Next slide. For math data, we had an overall district level of met and exceeded standards of 79%, which represented 82% in third grade, 84% in fourth grade, 82% in fifth grade, 66% in sixth grade, 77% in seventh grade and 77% in eighth grade as well. And then our science test, which in California is only given to fifth and eighth graders, we had an overall level of met and exceeded of 75%, which was 78% for fifth graders and 70% for eighth graders. And this is the one test that has not been shortened by the state during COVID and distance learning, the state shortened the CASP tests and they did not shorten science. And this year, science will also be reported on the dashboard with our other state results along with language arts and math. The next slide is the cohort data slide. So if we look across, that is showing the achievement level of that grade. So a different group of students every year. And if we look down a diagonal, so following a color down a diagonal, that's following the same, essentially the same cohort of students over time. So looking at the far right 2025 column, that's for last spring's CASP scores. And if the number is bold, that shows an increase in the achievement, in the met and exceed, met and exceeded level for that same cohort of students. So for example, looking at the ELA table, in 2024, 79% of third graders, that's kind of the sage color, I guess, 79% of third graders met or exceeded for ELA and in 2025, 84% of that same group met or exceeded. So if the number is in parentheses, that means that there was a drop in that, that grade levels number of students who met or exceeded that, based on the CASP data. And again, a point-in-time piece of data, depending on the level of the students, there can be a lot of things that impact that, but just something that we try to track over time to ensure that we're considering different things like curriculum, other assessments, looking at that data, other things that might be going on with that group of students, including the transition to middle school. Often we do see a drop from fifth to sixth grade as students are transitioning to larger classes and moving around to classrooms, letter grades and things like that. So our overtime data, excitingly, we did see increases in all three areas again this year. So overall, 83% of our students met and exceeded standards in ELA, 79% in math and 75% in science. And that was an increase over 23, 24. And again, this showed, as it did last year, essentially a return to pre-COVID levels, which was something that we were looking for as we were watching the data and ensuring that we were returning to all the in-person goodness of school and being with students full-time. And again, we don't have comparison data yet because typically now is when we would look at some similar districts as well as the county and the state. And we don't have that yet because all data is embargoed until the state releases the dashboard, which should be in mid-November. So the next two slides show some subgroup data. So a table for English language arts on the left and a table for math on the right. This, these subgroups are our race, as, student groups as broken up by race and ethnicity reporting. We report on many different races, but as I mentioned, our subgroups are very small. So you'll see at the bottom of the table, we have a combined subgroup for American Indian or Alaska Native, Black or African American, Native Hawaiian or Pacific Islander and Filipino populations. Other than that, they're broken down as reported here. In the next to last green column, so the first green column, that's the percent of the subgroup that met or exceeded. And when it is in bold, it's an increase from the prior year. And then the far right column is the difference between the district average and the subgroups met or exceeded. So we can see there are several subgroups here, Hispanic and Latino, Asian and our combined subgroup that do have lower met and exceeded rates than our, our overall student group. And so as we've mentioned in, in previous years, this is a pattern that we do see and we do need to ensure that we are doing what we can to support those students that we do not continue to have a gap in achievement based on race, race and ethnicity. And also recognizing that those are, do tend to be smaller subgroups in our district. And so a variation in student numbers can shift that year to year as well. This is another slide that's set up in the same way as the previous slide, but this is based on students' English language acquisition status. So we have, as the state, which we're going to talk more about in the next presentation, the state divides students along four different groups as either English only, which are students who speak English only. Then there are reclassified fluent English proficient. Those are students who were English learners but have made sufficient progress in learning English to where they're now reclassified. Then there are initial fluent English proficient. So those are multilingual learners who came to school and were already proficient in English. And then English learners, those are our students who are multilingual learners and are still, still learning English. So we report also the same things, the percent of the subgroup that met and exceeded, as well as the difference between the district average for that subgroup, the district average and the achievement of that subgroup as well. And just a note that of course. And just a note that, of course, English learners by definition are at uh are are English learners. And so their performance on our Ling- English Language Arts um CASP tests, we would not expect them to to achieve at the same level as our other um, as our English-only or our initial fluent English proficient. And so one of the things that we do when we break the data down is to ensure that we're looking at that English learner progress separately, which we'll talk a little bit about in the next presentation, how we do that. And then also ensuring that we are tracking our reclassified English learners to ensure that they continue to make progress over time as well. So a few key data points. Our overall achievement improved between twenty-four and twenty-five. Our gains were similar across all three tested areas. They were smaller gains, but we do have a very high level of achievement already. So our goal is always to bring any change that we can in the positive direction, which we've continued to do, which is certainly a testament to the high levels of learning in our classrooms and the hard work of our teachers and staff. Our cohort data provides an access point for more analysis as we do think about different subgroups and how we can best support them. And again, our English learner CASP data indicates that we do need to ensure that we continue to consider our English learner programs and how to organize things for those students. The next slide just compares our achievement in ELA, in English Language Arts, math, and science. This year, how it changed from the previous year, and then what our LCAP target is. So in our LCAP, we have specific um levels for met and exceeded that we're hoping to reach by the end of twenty-twenty-seven. So we are making progress, um and we hope that we can continue to um bump that up over the next couple of years before the end of this LCAP, which is already a year from this June. Incredibly. It feels like we were just building it. Okay, so what are we doing? We're continuing to develop system-wide coherence around those essential questions that Dr. Kaufman has uh brought up again and again, and that we looked at in our LCAP as well. What do we want all students to know and be able to do? How do we know if they know it? And what do we do if they don't know or if they already know? Continuing to support implementation of common evidence-based curriculum in grades TK through eight. It's been great to work with teachers over the last few weeks at the Collaboration Days as we've explored our CKLA uh implementation in more detail, having the third edition, and seeing where um they're really working hard to implement that and and where we can also continue to to adjust and and help it to fit our student groups best. We are planning for math and science adoption TKV. In particular, math curriculums are being released and approved by the state this year in um alignment with the new math framework. And so we're hoping to be um piloting and adopting a curriculum next year, TKV or K5. And then middle school curriculum is is fairly aligned in several areas. And then uh we have an opportunity in other areas to see whether it's time to consider new adoptions there as well. And then uh this year, also supporting implementation of common evidence-based liter- literacy assessments, specifically uh with the DIBELS assessments for literacy screeners this year in alignment with the California Reading Difficulties Screener Legislation, which I spoke to the board about last spring, and progress monitoring as part of that as well. So we've also had really rich discussions with teachers and with our TOSSAs and principals already in terms of being able to track students' progress in an evidence-based um specific way, and then have that comparative data as well to ensure that we're really supporting students with that essential skill of learning to read in elementary school. So what will be coming up? Additional data analysis, I-Ready data, DIBELS data as well, particularly as part of our mid mid-year LCAP update with district metrics and comparison to other districts.
Thank you. Any, yeah, questions? Comments?
Yes.
Uh, trustee U, go ahead.
So I'm wondering why on page, sorry, let me back to the page. On page um by by um race. What's that page? Subgroup analysis, page?
Thirty-two?
Thirty, oh no, eleven.
My slide number is eleven, yes.
Yeah, eleven. I'm wondering why.
Can we go back to that slide?
Yeah.
Thank you.
That one, yeah.
Why Hispanic and La- Latino groups had uh uh a performance that was significantly below others?
They tend to be our largest number of English learners and also reclassified English learners. So in English Language Arts in particular, that is likely to be a reason that they are still um gaining proficiency in English language. And you know, there are other demographic factors that can impact that as well. But of course, our goal is always figuring out how to reach that group so that we do not continue to see persistent gaps along racial lines for certain racial or ethnic groups versus others.
What kind of stuff are we doing to reach that?
So we continue to have our TLL program and intervention, more additional monitoring through things like DIBELS so that we can um w- we can identify the specific gaps in their reading, learning to read that might be better met or that we can meet to ensure that they gain those skills, for example. And then uh, you know, our teachers work to address student needs as well when they see them.
Um, can I also ask why our our math and science scores lag ELA scores?
I think that is a general trend that we see, that people tend to, like, math and science are just scores that do not typically rise to the same level as English Language Arts or reading scores do, in this country at least.
And is there, are we making any effort to improve that? Or like, I'm I'm actually, you know, you you see about how American students rank nation, you know, internationally in math in high school, it's pretty dismal. Are we on track for that? So that our, at least our kids are not going to be? You know, I I.
One thing that I think we need to, I mean, obviously, we need an articulated math program that's, you know, starts TK or K and goes through eighth grade. So I think that's an area where we're really excited about getting a lang- a math adoption as the state rolls them out and approves them, because we do have multiple programs, so it's hard to compare apples to apples. One of the challenges uh with math is that a lot of the math that kids are using right now um is very language dependent and literacy dependent. So when you're in a class and you were asked to solve problems that are more of a project-based, and you need to read and analyze and take multiple steps in the problems, it requires you to have a lot of in- innate literacy and understanding of language. And so I think that's an area where where as you see a a certain population lagging in literacy, you will often see them lagging in math as well because those are so tightly connected in the way we assess.
I mean, there's going to be new state-approved curriculum, right? Is it going to be? I mean, I I don't, I haven't really followed the latest on that. Is it going to dilute the 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 standard further as a lot of states have been doing? Or what is?
It shouldn't. I think, you know, in this case, you know, I don't know for sure what's on the 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 state list. I don't even know if the state's finished approving their list, but my anticipation is probably that a program that we already use called Bridges that many of our classes use will be on it. Um, the, I'm guessing, the I-Ready uh program, actually, I'm assuming again, it will also be on there. It is, the actual I-Ready curriculum is in edreports.gov. They're green, highest rank, so as is Bridges. So I think we have some good foundational tools already in place. I think it's a matter of articulation. And then just making sure we have common language, you know, I was in a, at Edna and watching fifth grade the other day, and they were just in sync. I went to three different classrooms, and they were so incredibly aligned, class to class, you know. But that, i- if the grade below you or the grade above you is using different tools or different language, it's much harder for kids to recall with precision what they're what they're learning. So I think it's, you know, much like what we're trying to do with language arts and having common assessments and common ways of progress monitoring, we will need to do that with math. And, you know, right now, it's, we don't have a systematic approach to um really remedying in math just because we have limited time. So in some cases, we do remediation um in language arts, and sometimes we do it in math. I think we need the ability to do both, and we also don't have a great system for extending um for kids who are already at grade level. And that that occurs, you know, in in both language arts and math. I think, given the nature of our school day, we may have to have a bit more technology focused in that. But I think, you know, that's one of the things we're trying to get is a real system where we know every child learns and grows a year, you know, a year for a year's growth, for a year's time, more if needed. So it's more of a, I think, of a systems artifact.
And I would add too that our achievement levels in math are very very, very high compared to our neighboring districts and also to the state. And so in terms of our students being successful, I do think that we are continuing to see our students be successful in math. Is it as high as it can be? Probably not, but we are seeing an increase every year. And so, you know, our, we know that our kids are working hard, our teachers are working hard. We have some good things on the horizon to support that, and our our achievement in Mill Valley is strong in math.
And and sci- science as well.
Is that seventy considered high? Seventy percent adult proficient in science considered high?
I I deleted my slide with this, the state data from last year, but I want to say it was around thirty-five or forty percent met or exceeded. It was very low.
This is, California is pretty poorly ranked.
Well, and we don't have the same test in other states, so it's, we can't, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I I I just wonder if there's any way to bring our math up to, especially middle school math, if I look at it. You know, it definitely lags. I mean, it could also be where they are in terms of development.
Mm-hmm. But. I I I think like, we've also talked to, talked about this, that could have tied to what Elizabeth said about the curriculum, that if they're doing different things across different elementary schools, and we saw this with, you know, with the ELA curriculum, then it's a lot harder when they're all coming together in sixth grade, and some are bored, and some are, you know, some some are writing level. And so getting everybody aligned, I think, will help so that sixth grade is no longer this kind of leveling point um and or re-leveling point, and then move on from there. And uh hopefully, we can better serve students then. I was excited about science being such a such an increase, not where we want it to be necessarily, want to keep going, but um over where we have been in past years.
And we we typically are um the highest in the county for science achievement. So I want to highlight that for all of our teachers out there, our science teachers.
We have amazing teachers, but I I look at some of.
Absolutely, yeah. And and I do think, you know, like, it is interesting on the math scores in particular, our standard not met is our smallest group. So our students are in the nearly met and the met and exceeded. That's a good measure, I think, as well about what we're doing and how we're supporting students, because um if we had, you know, a much larger number in that standard not met and in in, you know, four of our grades, that's less than, fewer than five percent of students who are in that standard not met category. And, you know, so that that to me is a good indicator of of our students doing well as well.
I see, yeah.
Yes, and I might be able to provide some possible ideas on this um based on my background. So one of the things that, you know, this is my second term, and we've just had a lot of growth um as a team. And I think we're ready for an idea that I want to share today. Uh, but, you know, I'm not expecting instant results, but I want to be able to meet maybe even in person with you and with some teachers, is that we have so much success and data can show that. So let's find out why. Why are we successful? What do these CASP scores share by looking at the questions and having opportunities to data dive now and data dive later? And also, um, I think it's important that we start talking about data with our students and find out, you know, those students that are struggling, get some qualitative data from them. For example, we have, what what is it, a hundred and, how many students do we have that are classified? I'm sorry, it's really, a hundred forty-five that are classified as ELA?
No, no, it's.
I'm sorry, what's in?
Forty-five.
Better Latino.
Hundred forty-five Hispanic Latino?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hundred, hundred thirty-four.
Hundred thirty-four. So what about, we make one um goal to know every single student, those hundred and thirty-four students, and as, you know, as a cohort of teachers, uh, look at them through the years and try and unpack what works and what doesn't work. Because, for example, when I look at these numbers, and I've looked at these numbers in my career before, I'm like, oh, I'm sure some of these kids' parents don't speak English as the primary language, where others do. And, you know, if they do, even though they come from Ethiopia, they're going to pick up English a lot faster. That's what the research shows. But this kind of CASP data is really frustrating and difficult because it doesn't unpack the story behind the numbers. So I'm just wondering if we could share that narrative with the board and develop a practice of doing that moving forward in this district as we start, like you said, trustee Katz, to align curriculum. This provides that way to look at this data um more, you know, to unpack the threads uh so that we could even have some interesting presentations from kids or from teachers as to what this data actually is sharing.
Would you do that for any child who's not, oh, who's at, you know, standard not met though?
Say it again?
Well, why would you isolate it to one ethnic group?
Well, I've just picked, well, I'm just saying, one, it starts somewhere, just start somewhere as a practice.
It's not.
But but also what.
It's all of our children.
Yes, so what I want to, right, but what I want to also highlight is we have highly successful children by data. So what are those factors? And how do we replicate them for all children? You know, and it might just be practices of mind, practices of habit, sometimes, you know, some kid. So in other words, it, the data, un- un-teasing it a little bit more.
We do have the um Youth Truth data as well, that is our yearly climate survey. And there, we did our, had our first year that replaced the California Healthy Kids Survey last year. So there was a report on that, and this year we'll have comparative data because it will be our second year doing that um survey with with staff, students, and families, grades three through eight for students, all staff, all families. And that will be a great opportunity to see how students are reporting their sense of belonging. And we asked um actually some some other additional questions as well.
Right. So I'm just wondering if my other colleagues feel the same way. You know, we get these presentations, but if you have an interest in un-teasing it more.
I mean, oh, oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, when we, when we bring the I-Ready, what what doesn't, what no longer happens in the CASP, which used to happen, is you would get an item analysis by standard. Because they've shortened it, you don't get that. But when we bring I-Ready back, we can show item analyses by relative performance areas in relation to standard. And that's what I think you're saying, is where are we? Where are, where are our strengths programmatically in terms of standards mastery? Where are weaknesses in those areas of weakness? Who are the students who are weakest? And what are we doing? So I think that's the, that the challenge for us right now is that the CASP does, data doesn't do that like it used to.
The individual reports do, so if parents.
But we don't get to see that.
We don't, we don't have it in broad groups for.
Which is why we look at I-Ready as a predictor.
I see. Thank you. That's important, though.
Sorry, trustee Abdoi.
I just wanna say, I mean, like, part of the reason wh- while I do really care for state testing. Um, I guess for me, it's more that math, we've been waiting frustratedly for the state to release a curriculum. And so a lot of our challenge is that without that, we do have the different um the the differences. And like, I look at, you know, with sixth grade now, right, those poor teachers are looking, are spending time trying to say, okay, I got kids coming from different elementary schools and making sure they're getting alignment um and and kind of getting a good assessment of like where kids are. So for me, it's like, with math, that's what we have to tackle before I think we can really, you know, it's waiting for the state to to finally release that. And on science, you know, we've had the discussion about getting a little bit more consistency and regularity with our science instruction. Um, and so wh- while again, I I respect and value state testing, I think for me, it's more the like, under, you know, like, looking at those exciting things about like, what are we doing in science? What are we doing in math? And necessarily um, or 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 rather, in addition to um these results.
You mean the input and not the output with the test?
There you go. Thank you for summarizing it so succinctly.
And I'll just add also that um as it relates to science too, because CKLA is a knowledge curriculum, you know, as well as a skills curriculum, those are some of the units that our teachers are reporting, that students are very into, are the the units that a lot of, some of the historical units too, some of them fall a little flatter than others, some of them surprise us with what they are interested in. But great things have been done around human body units and light and sound and um other inventor units. And so I think that all of that will hopefully, and they don't always, you know, the difficulty of a national curriculum is that they don't always align specifically to our state standards. So that's why our teachers are still, you know, teaching science to the state standards as well. And all of that is a balancing act in our limited school days. But um they do have, you know, they are excited about the science and and that knowledge framework in the CKLA curriculum as well.
Thank you. Um, with that, should we move on to the next next presentation with this?
So this is the, an initial presentation to provide you just sort of an overview of what the English learner m- master plan is and what, how we work with English learners. We will be coming uh back in January or February to share specific data about students and what programs we're using to support them.
So this first slide talks about some of the governing laws and regulations that undergird the English learner. Protocols in school districts in California and the different ways that we as a district um comply with those measures. So first, at the federal level, there's the Every Student Succeeds Act and Title III program. Under that state level, there's California Education Code and Title V. At the district level, we direct our program through the MVSD English Learner Master Plan, which this uh breaks down components of. Um that's where the legal requirements and the district practices combine to describe what we do. And then at the school level, that's where um the site-based EL programs and services are provided. The um in particular, there there is a requirement that there is timely identification and assessment within thirty days of enrollment. Of a student who speaks um who is a multilingual learner, speaking a language other than English. Except in TK, so one of the changes is as we've had the TK program, we still. Parents fill out what's called a home language survey, reporting the languages that students have learned to speak, what languages adults speak in the household to children. And then uh in TK, we just hold that information until their kindergarteners and then assess them. Uh we have clear parent notification and involvement protocols and then. Systematic monitoring and data reporting via Calpads, which is the state data system and it's what that data is what then ultimately feeds. Systems like Data Quest where um it's kind of like the dashboard, but you can go deeper on different. Um things about demographics and achievement about schools. So next, uh we of course. Know and recognize that English learners bring valuable linguistic and cultural assets to our schools. And that being a multilingual uh student or person is a strength that enriches not only our learning community, but our communities um in general. And that family engagement and cultural inclusion are essential to student success. So we have to be working on those parts along with the academic parts of language acquisition. So our district-wide goals um include developing students' English proficiency rapidly and effectively so that they can. Um have English proficiency and thus be engaged in our English-only classrooms um as quickly as possible. Ensure full access to grade-level curriculum, foster cultural inclusion and family engagement and reclassify students. To fluent English proficient uh when they are meeting that criteria. For our L cap goals as they relate to English learners, we have a target of ninety percent of students scoring three or four on the LPAC. Which is the state um assessment for English learners. An eighty percent, a goal of eighty percent for English learners to increase one or more LPAC levels annually, and I'll talk a little bit about what those levels are in a minute. And then um a target for eighty percent of our English learners to reach grade level on I ready as well. Next slide, please. So um our identification and assessment process. Starts with student enrollment when the home language survey is completed by parents. Um that only happens once, so if they've enrolled in a previous a previous school in California, then we ensure that we have that information. But we capture that that data on their home language survey and then we um. Review that data to determine whether there are languages other than English being spoken at home that would mean that the student is a multilingual learner. And then students, if they are, um are administered the initial LPAC assessment. So there's the initial LPAC and the summative assessment, the initial LPAC is what has to happen within thirty days of enrollment or thirty days in kindergarten if they were a TK. Student and that measures their English language proficiency. From there, students are classified either as IFEP, Initial Fluent English Proficient. Meaning they are a multilingual learner, but they are proficient in English upon entering school and do not need to be classified as an English learner. Or that they are classified as an English learner, then they're provided services in alignment with that and yearly, they take the summative LPAC. Which is taken typically between February and May and um they take that summative LPAC, we get those scores back and we have a reclassification. Process um based on those scores and some other inputs and parent um contact as well. If they meet a certain criteria. Um also, there are parent notification parts to this, so initially, parents are notified if their student will be assessed using the initial LPAC. And then there's also an annual notification for English learners um at the beginning of each school year and then there are also. Um summative LPAC assessment results notifications annually for those students who take the summative LPAC. And notifications if their student was to be ARFED as well, parent input is part of that process as well. So for a little picture of our English learner demographics and enrollment. That little blue sliver of that large green pie on the left is a represents our English learners in Mill Valley in twenty twenty five, twenty six. So this year across the district, we have thirty nine English learner students. That is a very small population even for our district. It represents two percent, it's actually one point seven percent of our English learners. Um and as you can see from the table below, this represents a drop over previous years. Some of that is because we did, we have been able to reclassify a large group of students from last year to this year. But in addition, uh we know that often our English learners are a transient group of students in our district. And for a variety of factors, including different um. Political things going on, it may be that we're not getting as many of those students as we might at other times or I might have had at other times. The uh circle, the ring graph on the right shows the different languages spoken by current Mill Valley School District English learners. So we have a number of different, this represents those thirty nine uh students. That largest blue section represents those students who speak Spanish, fifteen of our students. Uh the orange section are Portuguese speakers, there are four of those. Three French speakers, three Dutch speakers. And then uh two or one of Mandarin, Russian, Polish, Gujarati, Vietnamese, Hindi, Punjabi and Iranian languages. Which is the way that the state cap classifies Iranian languages. I don't know exactly what, that's the way, I think Farsi, they classify differently, so it's something uh I know, they're the state has. Their own systems. Um there are more languages represented in our total population, but this specifically is this year's current English learners. So um thinking about our LPAC performance results from twenty four, twenty five. We had almost fifty percent of our students scoring a level four, which is an outstanding result. Um representing lots of hard work by uh teachers across the district. Uh we did assess eighty three students last year or we had eighty three English learners, so that forty six point. Um six percent represents a a big, a great number of students. We had um seventy nine point five percent of students scoring a three or four. So that L cap goal of reaching ninety percent, we're only ten percent away from that. Again, this population changes year to year, so we do have to balance that as we're looking at the metrics, but you know, it's. It's great to see this kind of achievement for these students. The LPAC um assesses on four different domains of English language acquisition, speaking, listening, reading and writing. And students can score one of four levels. Level one is beginning to develop where we had about ten percent of students fall. Level two somewhat developed, which we had about eleven percent of students fall, moderately developed thirty three percent and well-developed forty seven percent. So again, our current goal is getting ninety percent of of our English learners to score levels three or four on the LPAC. And our current achievement is uh seventy nine point five percent at levels three or four. And we have another target um to get eighty percent of English learners to increase one or more um levels annually. And um in a couple slides, we'll look at the English learner performance or progress indicator, which is the way that we can measure that. So the next slide is about our CASP performance for English learners. You saw this in the other table, but this is broken down specifically just for English learners, so you can see their distribution. It is, as I mentioned, important to remember that English learners are not yet proficient in academic English, so we would not expect their performance on CASP. Which is measuring academic English proficiency in English Language Arts. Um to achieve the same as our other students, it's why it's just one picture, but it is a measure that the state uses. To describe student growth and so it's important that we consider that as well. Uh we are also to provide some universal supports to English learners when they are taking state assessments. In order to level the playing field a little bit more, particularly on the math assessment. So this is a graph from our twenty twenty four English learner progress indicator, we don't have that twenty twenty five graph yet. But you can see here that in uh twenty twenty four, we had uh sixty five percent, almost sixty five percent of students. Who advanced one or more levels on the LPAC, which is just outstanding, that's uh the kind of progress that we're looking for in that L cap goal. Um and obviously for our students also and then um. We had twenty five percent who maintain and a small number who in who decreased their scores, but. What's important to note is that there are different bands of assessment for the LPAC, so for example. Um as students increase in grade, the complexity and difficulty of the assessment goes up significantly. Um there are some big jumps there, so it might be harder for a second grader to increase a level from second to third grade. Um but from third to fourth grade, the test is more similar, for example. Uh this is this English learner pro- progress indicator is uh reported on the dashboard along with many other metrics for our district. Um and it it, of course, these bars, because we do um reclassify some students and because it is a transient population. It's not necessarily the same cohort of students each year, but it does represent our progress for all students. And of course, we want our students to be um making progress whether they're new to us or have been with us for years. So uh reclassification and monitoring after students take the summative LPAC. Um there are some reclassification criteria which indicate that they have become proficient in learning English. First, they have scored an overall level four of well-developed on the summative LPAC. For the different subtests on the LPAC, speaking, listening, reading and writing, you can get different subscores. But there's an overall composite score and that's what we look at for uh reclassification. We also speak with teachers for verification of the student's readiness for English-only instruction. Then there's also parent consultation and written consent is required to finalize reclassification. And we look at basic skills like grade-level performance on CASP or I ready. Um on progress reports and ensuring that we're seeing how students are doing in that way. After students, um so there's the process evaluated each year for each student. Assess assessment, then the evaluation, then parent involvement, reclassification and finally monitoring. Because the state says, once a student is reclassified, that's you need to make sure that the student continues to progress uh in. Even though they're not receiving those additional English learner um supports. So students who have been ARFED, we say, uh are monitored for four years post-reclassification. And um we, in working to be sure that we are adding in systems and structures. Being sure that we with principals are reviewing uh progress at the end of the first grading period and each semester thereafter for these students. Especially those who are newly reclassified and the reviews include grades, checking in with teachers as well as assessment results. Um and looking at things like attendance too, to ensure that we're not seeing um some of those other qualitative factors that impact student performance. And then looking at what we might be able to provide if academic progress does decline after students have been reclassified. So next steps, uh we hope as a district that we can continue to enhance things like professional development for all teachers. Um on integrated English learner development standards. Our tier one first best instruction is essential for these learners, that's where they spend the majority of their time. And in California, all teachers are required to have uh credentialing to work with English learners, that's our CLAD or BECLAD. Um certifications, we um hope to continue to strengthen family engagement through expanded translation services and parent outreach. Specifically, reaching out directly to families to have them included in our L cap district advisory committee, again. Making sure that we're including diverse voices wherever we can. Um looking at other ways that we can um respond directly to English learner student needs. And then continuing to track and respond to English learner progress. As Dr. Kaufman mentioned, we will bring an updated English learner master plan for approval at a future meeting. And then um internally, we will continue to review student schedules for EL support. Uh later, bring what our English learner support looks like specifically this year and considering additional resource allocation. And checking in on EL achievement metrics. EL is English learner, I probably have said that a bunch of times without defining it, sorry.
Uh any questions? No, okay, well, that was um informative, thank you. Appreciate it. Um and with that, we will move on to our next items, which are personnel items, I think it's um. Or assignments.
Yep, I'll cover um both of them in one um introduction. Uh there are two resolutions, uh it one is for a certificate assignment authorization for. Folks who are working in core subject areas, so we have some individuals who have uh credentials that. Uh enable them to operate um maybe outside of their. Core, like if you have a multiple subject credential and they're teaching a single subject program, we are asking for board authorization. To allow those individuals to teach departmentalized subjects, so that is the first authorization. The second resolution is um similar, although it's for uh being able to teach elective. So one's a core content area, the other's elective, it's the same resolution to approve and authorize. Um credentialed employees on a one full-time basis to provide instruction outside of a specific credentialing area.
Any questions? Yes, would you like to take a one-minute water break?
Yeah, where's the water?
We can get you water.
We can, we can continue on then. Um with that, could I get a motion to approve resolution zero seven dash twenty five, twenty six?
So moved. I'll second.
Oh, thank you, on favor?
Hi.
This is not roll call, no?
Uh it's a resolution, so it is.
Oh, it is roll call.
President Nakatani?
Uh yes.
Trustee Abdullah, trustee Sernchad Tad.
Hi.
Trustee you.
Hi.
I'm trustee cats and I am an I.
Thank you, could I get a a motion to approve resolution zero eight dash twenty five, twenty six? A second? Again, a roll call. I'm an I.
Senator Nakatani, hi, all right, trustee Abdullah. Trustee Sernchad Tad.
Hi.
Trustee you.
Hi.
I'm trustee cats and I am an I.
Thank you, both resolutions pass, we will go on to the monthly budget with super assistant superintendent Renee, thank you very much.
So before you have our first snapshot, uh our budget updates. Um since our budget adoption and um we did not have that big of a shift. Um within revenues, the biggest um change that we did have was the one-time funding block grant that we received from the state. Um we received um three hundred and thirteen. Per ADA for last year's um ADA and it is discretionary, so as we had. A prior commitment from last year, those funds will be helping um with our TK program that we had allocated when we had earmarked already for this year. Um within expenditures, once again, you're seeing all of our current placements. Um you're seeing the shifts again that we typically see around this time for all um. The positions that we're not able to fill, so you'll see a shift between our personnel expenditures into um. The five thousands or operational, which is when we have to um contract with an agency because we're not able to fill. Um a position and those positions are, we are mandated um positions that we typically use. Um for regards to special ed programs or TK. So those are the ones, the areas that we're really focusing on in filling, otherwise, we're trying to loot um either absorb. Or see where we cannot um have to completely fill a position. Um so there really was not, um you're gonna see a swap, it was pretty much a one point six million. Drop in personnel and then one point six in agency, there wasn't a lot of shift. Um and then, but there were some program um needs, we um, there were some iPads that we purchased. And and just operational things that we need for student programs. Um so the biggest shift was within our revenues, we increased by a half percent. But our expenditures, we increased by one percent, so our overall net change was a point five. Um so that's where we are and these were expenses through last week. So um next month, we'll bring it up again. Any questions?
Question? Thank you. Then I think we have a resolution to authorization with science.
Yes, so the next thing is just an authorization to um. Add Sue Murphy um in her correct title um for signature. So that's just a resolution.
Okay, could I, uh any questions about this or comments? Okay, could I get a motion to approve resolution zero nine dash twenty five, twenty six?
So moved.
You a second?
Second.
And this is a resolution, so it's roll call.
President Nakatani?
Hi.
Trustee Abdullah.
Hi.
Trustee Sernchad Tad.
Hi.
Trustee you.
Hi.
And trustee cats and I am an I.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to our next resolution of the evening, uh we have a resolution here to uh authorize the. Staff to uh file applications for the state allocation board, the Prop two has got some new regulations. That we. new regulations that we need to fulfill between now and November of 2026 to be eligible for state funding for facilities. So, or for a specific pocket of school facility program funding. So we are asking for approval of the resolution.
So moved.
Second. Any questions about it before we go to motion?
No, I think we need the funding.
Okay, so moved in a second. Thank you. I'll roll call again.
President Nakatani?
Hi.
Trustee Abdullah?
Hi.
Trustee Sernchitad?
Hi.
Trustee Yu?
Hi.
I am trustee Katz, and I'm an I.
Thank you, everyone. Okay.
Speaking of needing money, I'm gonna invite Charles and Jessica and rope. And I do want to say, one of the things, you know, is we're, we're looking at our budget very seriously. I have to give Polit and the BAC kudos for an ending fund balance that was only $35,000 off what was projected, which is outstanding. I also want to capture for our community that that budget was built on a 1.8 million dollar ongoing cut on top of $220,000 that we had cut already for next year. And so as we speak this evening about not just the extension of the parcel tax, but the renewal potentially of the parcel tax that expired in 2021, that is the difference of an entire grade level program for us. So when we look at TK costs, whether or not they apply in this direct polling conversation, that $2 million that expired in 2021 would have been what would have covered the difference for TK for us. So it is very, very important that we, as a district and community, stay together in terms of working on ways of supplemental funding, whether it is through bonds, parcel taxes, or hopefully in the very short-term community support for some of the program gaps, because I don't think there's a whole lot more we can cut. So I'll hand it off to Charles and team.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Kaufman. I will start just providing some background and context for the conversation about the parcel tax. And then I'll turn it over to Jessica from EMC Research to talk in more detail about the details of the survey data she recently collected from the voters in your district. And then I'll come back at the end and we'll talk a little bit about some recommendations and options for how we might move forward. But the conversation really tonight is about, you know, your, your existing parcel tax funding is set to expire in a couple of years. It's a significant amount of funding that the district has relied upon for a long time. Your parcel tax was originally adopted by local voters in 1987, so it's been in place for going on 40 years. And it started off as a fairly modest parcel tax, but over time has grown to now account for about 25% of the district's budget, over $12 million a year this year. So when the parcel tax funding represents such a significant portion of the district's overall operational funds, typically you don't want to wait until the 11th hour before the parcel tax is set to expire to consider renewal. That would trigger, you know, having to make fundamental changes to the budget, consider potential staff and teacher layoffs, a lot of, you know, commotion in the district when if we do some forward thinking and planning and get out in front of that potential expiration, we can sort of bridge the gap and make sure that there's a, a smooth transition from fiscal year to fiscal year. So that's the reason why we're looking at the parcel tax renewal now. There are two election opportunities next year, statewide elections, the primary election in June, the general election in November, where we could potentially place parcel tax renewal measures on the ballot. The parcel tax rate that will apply next year that we would potentially be renewing is $1,500 and $1,520 per parcel. As Superintendent Kaufman mentioned, we also wanted to take a look at, given the cuts that the district has had to make and the additional reductions that are under consideration, if there was an opportunity also to generate additional revenue through this measure by not just renewing that base parcel tax rate, but also revisiting the supplemental parcel tax that was in place here from 2012 through 2021. That parcel tax expired in 2021 at a rate of $234 per parcel, generating about $2 million a year. At that time, the district was receiving pretty significant COVID relief funding that it's no longer receiving. And so that was sort of the rationale for that expiration. But what we're looking at in our survey tonight is whether or not voters would be open to renewing the base parcel tax, but also restoring that funding that expired in, in 2021. So all in, that would potentially produce upwards of 14 to 15 million dollars per year if both were approved. So Jessica's going to share with you the results of a statistically reliable survey she recently conducted in the district, looking at general perceptions of the school district, the perception of the need for additional funding, but then also the specifics of a potential parcel tax proposal and some messaging pro and con to see how that influences overall voter support. So Jessica, if you want to summarize the results?
Yes. Good evening. Thank you so much. I will jump into the results and I'll mention really briefly, I apologize, I'm on the very tail end of a cold. So if I do start coughing, my colleague Andrew Bishop is here to jump in and rescue me, but I will try and get through. Yes. Okay. So just a couple of notes on the methodology for this survey.
Thank you. It must have been your math.
His math scores must have been good. Yeah, that's right.
Okay. So for this survey of likely voters here in the district, which we conducted in late August, we used mixed mode methodology that incorporates live telephone interviews along with online interviews where we reach likely voters by text invitation and email invitation to round out a demographically representative sample of likely voters. We did 400 interviews, so that carries a margin of error of plus or minus 4.9 percentage points, which we'll want to keep in mind throughout this presentation. So before we launch into the data, here are a few key findings. And of course, we'll show you the data to support these findings momentarily. We see voters here are happy about the way things are going broadly in the local community. So we'll show you that data. It's pretty surprising. And they continue to rate the quality of education here in Mill Valley School District schools very positively. We see that support for a parcel tax reauthorization measure starts off initially just below the necessary two-thirds threshold with tax sensitivity or cost sensitivity, as well as apprehension about the district's financial management cited most often as reasons for opposition. However, we see that support for this measure increases above two-thirds once respondents receive information about the benefits and need for the measure. So we see voters are particularly moved by information about what would be lost, what is at stake if the parcel tax were not renewed. When it comes to priorities for the measure, retaining highly qualified teachers and protecting core academic programs rise to the top of the list. We also tested a straight renewal of the existing parcel tax without a restoration of the expired parcel tax dollars. We see, we asked towards the end of the survey, support for that is just over two-thirds. But as you'll see in this presentation, that prospect, it doesn't cause a large increase in support. And so we'll share some takeaways based on those results shortly. A couple slides ahead. We'll jump into this slide, which we call the direction of the area. This is a question that comes at the very beginning of the survey before we've mentioned Mill Valley School District or public education at all. We simply ask, do you feel that things in the Mill Valley area are generally going in the right direction? Or do you feel things have gotten pretty seriously off on the wrong track? We do have some data on this question dating all the way back to 2004. So that gives us a comparison of how voters have felt over time. And what really stands out is the overwhelming optimism, 84% saying things in the local community going in the right direction, only 14% off on the wrong track. That's an all-time high going back to 2004. So that's nice to see. So awareness, have you heard or seen anything recently about the Mill Valley School District? A very, very broad question, not about anything specific. We asked that question in a poll in 2024, and there was widespread awareness of recent news. In this survey, still two-thirds say that they have heard at least a little recently about the, the district. Among that two-thirds, we then followed up with an open-ended question, what have you seen or heard? And then we categorized the different responses here in this table. So you can see the portion among the two-thirds who have heard something, who say each of these different responses or categories of responses. There's a lot of data here. The, the most frequently mentioned thing that they've heard or seen is around middle school construction and renovation issues. We also see a number of other issues. Some of them are confused a little bit with the high school district, as you can see, based on some of the responses. So that certainly highlights that there is some confusion among voters, especially probably voters who don't have students in the schools between the two districts. So on this slide, we summarize results when we ask voters to rate the district on these key metrics, the quality of education, the job the district is doing overall, the physical condition of school buildings, classrooms and grounds, the job the board is doing, and management of district monies. You can see overwhelmingly positive ratings when it comes to the quality of education and the job the district is doing overall. We see slightly higher numbers on the only fair or poor side when it comes to the physical condition of school buildings, classrooms and grounds. And then you can see towards the bottom, still more people rating the management of monies as positive than negative, but more divided opinions among voters on that item. We do ask about perception of need for additional funding for the local schools. Would you say that the schools have a great need for more money, some need, only a little need, or no real need for more money? And you could see the overall results on the top among all of our respondents of likely voters, 70% say there's at least some need for additional funding. That number is considerably higher among those who have students attending the Mill Valley schools right now, 77%, so more than three-quarters, saying that there's a need for additional funding, but still considerably high among those who don't have students attending the schools right now, 69%. Okay, so this next slide shows the potential 75-word ballot question that voters could see if the measure goes onto the ballot. So the Mill Valley Local Education Funding Renewal Measure to Protect High-Quality Academic Programs in Science, Technology, Engineering, Math, Reading and Writing in Local Elementary and Middle Schools, Retain and Attract Highly Qualified Teachers, and Maintain Small Class Sizes Shall the District's Measure Be Adopted? And it would reauthorize the existing school parcel tax at the current rate and restore the recently expired $234 per parcel. Shall this measure be adopted? When we initially asked this question, we see 62% say, yes, I would vote yes on this measure, another 2% undecided, but when prompted, which way do you lean? They lean toward yes. That brings us to a total of 64, which is just below the two-thirds threshold required for passage. And initially, 34% say they would be inclined to vote no, and 2% are undecided. Before we share more, the follow-ups to these questions, just wanted to give you a little bit of historical context, because we have a lot of polling data as well as data from election results on both parcel taxes and bond measures here in Mill Valley School District. Certainly, the overall takeaway is that we've seen historically pretty significant support from voters for measures, both in polling as well as in election outcomes. Those, those measures indeed have been successful right on, right on the threshold in some cases. And then we see some fluctuation in the most recent years on the right-hand side. But we did see, for example, in the polling in 2021 about what became Measure G, we saw softer support in that poll than we saw in the election where you got 68% voting for that measure. So we have seen in recent years, the ability to kind of solidify support for measures.
Can you just clarify the colors?
Yes, of course. So the, the purple colors indicate poll results. The lighter blue, those are election results on bond measures, and then the darker blue, election results for partial tax measures. So after we asked the initial ballot question, we followed up with an open-ended question. If they said they would vote yes, we asked why? Why would you vote yes on this measure? And then once again, we've taken all those different responses and categorized them here so that we could tally them up and show you the portions saying each type of response. The items that come up most often as reasons for supporting this measure are an overall kind of value of supporting public schools and supporting quality education and student outcomes. So not surprisingly, if they're in favor of this measure, they're doing it because they think schools deserve and need this additional funding, and they support quality education. And then there are a variety of other reasons mentioned by much smaller portions, like supporting teachers and staff, desire for effective use of funds, and so on and so forth as you move on down that list.
Could you, could you just give a little more clarifying information? Top reasons? Did you give them a list?
No.
Can you explain, explain how this data came to include these?
Sure. Absolutely. So when we say open-ended questions, that, that means that we allowed respondents to answer in whatever way they wanted. So we just asked, why would you vote yes on this measure? And then we recorded their response verbatim. Then we took all of those verbatim responses from all of the respondents who had voted yes on the measure. That was 256 respondents. And then we categorized them. So if they said something in this that we could categorize as general support for public schools, we put them into that category. If they said something around support for teachers and staff, we put them in that category. So we did categorize all of those verbatim responses, open-ended responses into these categories. And that allows us to tally the percentage who said each of these categories of responses. Thank you. Sorry, go back one. So for those who voted no in the initial ask in this poll, we then asked them, why did you vote no on this measure? And there are two reasons that sort of stand out. Again, this is an open-ended question where we categorize their responses into these various categories. The two things that stand out as being most prominent reasons for, for saying they would vote no are affordability concerns, so the cost, and then perceived mismanagement or inefficiency of funds. And then the belief that schools already have sufficient funding comes in behind that, mentioned by 14% among those who initially vote no. And then you can see other issues mentioned by smaller portions. On this next slide, here are some of the various projects and activities that are supported by parcel tax funds. And so we asked for each of these items that could be included in the parcel tax measure. Please indicate if you support or oppose that item. So these were all individual questions, and they were asked on a one to seven scale, where one is strongly opposed and seven is strongly support. The vast majority for all of these were high numbers, fives, sixes and sevens. So we're summarizing those on this slide. You can see the portion who said that's seven, something I strongly support in the darkest blue, and then the sixes and the fives in the lighter blue colors, and then the totals that at least somewhat support on the far right of the chart. And then these were all individual questions. They were asked in a randomized order for any given respondent. Then we took all the data and we ordered the response, the, the final data based on the total support numbers here. So you can see the items that rise to the top as being most supported by the likely voter community are retaining and attracting highly qualified teachers, protecting high-quality academic programs in reading and writing, and protecting high-quality academic programs in STEM. So not surprisingly, almost universal support for those items. The items here that are bolded are ones that appeared, appeared in the actual ballot question. So certainly the highest priority items are also mentioned in the ballot question that we tested in this poll. Maintaining outstanding academics in our schools, certainly important to the vast majority. Academic support services, small class sizes, reducing cuts, preventing cuts, and then finally preventing cuts to TK programs. All of these are important to two-thirds or more. So none of these is a project that is opposed by voters. But you can see the varying intensity as well as varying totals as you move down that list. These next couple of slides show the various informational pieces that we offered in the survey. We, we said, these are some of the things you would hear from supporters of this potential parcel tax measure. And after each one, we offered again a one to seven scale. And after each one, we offered again a one-to-seven scale where one is not at all convincing, and seven is very convincing. And we asked respondents to rate how convincing each one is as a reason to vote yes on this potential measure. And so once again, questions were presented in a randomized order, but we're sharing the ones that performed the most strongly here on this first slide in order. This top message, if the measure doesn't pass, the district will lose one quarter of its current budget, approximately twelve million per year in locally-controlled funding that has been in place since nineteen eighty-seven, leading to extensive teacher and staff layoffs, large class sizes, and cuts to academic programs. Seventy-five percent find that to be a convincing reason to support this renewal measure, with forty-nine percent saying that's a very convincing reason, rating that as a seven on the one-to-seven scale. So that's a very compelling message to the vast majority of voters here. The remaining items on this slide all are convincing, but not quite as convincing as that first message there, emphasizing this is a reauthorization of an existing tax that cuts to public education funding throughout the country, make this more important than ever to have a stable source of locally-controlled funding that can't be touched by the state or federal government, and then allowing the district to continue attracting and retaining skilled, experienced and dedicated teachers to maintain high-quality education in the schools. All of these convincing to around seventy percent. And then on the next slide, these are the remaining informational pieces that we presented in the survey. So this measure helps provide high-quality STEM courses, not just for middle students, but also for elementary school students. That is also compelling to many. All the funds from the measure subject to strict fiscal accountability, oversight, annual audits. Seventy-two percent saying that that is convincing. That test scores in the district have risen for a fifth consecutive year, and you saw those scores also highlighted this evening. Two-thirds saying that's a convincing reason to support this measure. And then lastly, keeping our, this measure helps keep our schools among the best in the area and maintain our local quality of life and property values. Sixty-two percent saying that is convincing. So on the next slide, this summarizes what happened after we presented this additional information about the components of the renewal measure as well as the information about the benefits and the need. We do see a significant increase in support after that information, going from sixty-four percent total support initially to seventy-two percent. That is a significant amount of movement in the course of a survey, especially compared to what we're seeing in other similar surveys across the state. So, and we do see support increase above the two-thirds threshold. So here you can see summarized three things that you might hear from an opponent of this measure. And we asked once again on a scale from one to seven, how convincing is this as a reason to oppose this potential measure? This first one highlights the cost. So that one is indeed convincing to nearly fifty percent. Twenty-nine percent find it very convincing. The second one is mentioning that viewpoint that the district has mismanaged funds. That is convincing to fewer, forty percent. And then the final message you might hear from an opponent, highlighting that the measure authorizes use of funds for TK, and that's not fair for those who've had to pay it for preschool. That is far less convincing, only thirty percent saying that's a convincing reason to vote no on this measure. So here you can see the vote progression. Once again, recalling the initial support at sixty-four percent. That jumps to seventy-two percent after information. And then after opposition, goes down a couple points, but not below the two-thirds threshold. That is a significant finding. It shows that the strength of the information about the need for the measure is stronger than those opposition messages. So finally, we also wanted to see what would happen when we asked if the measure did not restore the expired parcel tax and simply renewed the existing parcel tax at the current rate. How would you vote? And so this came right after that post-opposition ask of support or opposition for the measure. And you do see support rise just a couple percentage points, up to seventy-two percent. But it doesn't go above that high ceiling level support that we saw after positive information. So not really a significant jump. You know, not a lot of enthusiasm behind supporting a measure that is a renewal only without restoring expired funding. So that sort of leads us to the takeaway that that might not be the most compelling reason to support this measure. So all of that brings us to some conclusions that we've mentioned and will reiterate here, that although we don't see initial support for this measure above two-thirds, we do see support increased above two-thirds in this poll once we've explained the potential consequences of not renewing the parcel tax measure. We see that many voters are aware of issues facing the district, especially around middle school construction. While the idea of a parcel tax renewal at the current rate without restoring expired funding is supported by more than two-thirds, we once again don't see a significant increase compared to that post-opposition ask in the poll. So we believe the most important thing is ensuring that voters understand what's at stake if the parcel tax is not renewed. And with that, happy to hand it back to Charles, and then we can answer any other questions you might have.
There we go. Just to add on to what Jessica said, I'm pleasantly surprised by these poll results. I think it shows an opportunity to move forward with a measure, not just to renew your base parcel tax, but also potentially to restore that supplemental parcel tax. You know, the two percent bump that we get by focusing just on our renewal, that is two million dollars annually less in funding. I personally wouldn't trade two percent for two million dollars annually, given what your needs are. So to me, it seems like there's an opportunity to do this. In terms of election timing, looking at the options available to us, I think the June primary election of twenty twenty-six makes some sense for a couple of reasons. One, if you get your approval in June, that makes the new funding from the restoration of the parcel tax available in the twenty-six, twenty-seven fiscal year. If you wait until November or beyond, you are waiting an additional fiscal year before you start receiving those funds. We're also keeping a close eye on other potential tax proposals coming to the ballot here in Marin County statewide. And, you know, in November, it seems quite likely that Tam Union High School District will have their own parcel tax renewal measure on the ballot. Directly competing parcel taxes are probably going to be a challenge when both need a two-thirds vote. So that sort of leaves the June opportunity available to us. Also, we live in such volatile times right now. You know, none of us have a crystal ball and know what things are going to be like in two weeks from now, much less, you know, six or eight months. But, you know, I think that the longer we look out into the future, the greater the likelihood there could be some sort of significant recessionary event or stock market downturn or something else that could fundamentally change how people look at measures like this. So no guarantees that it's going to be smooth sailing between now and June, but the crystal ball just gets cloudier the further out we look into the future. So can we pull up the next slide there? Thank you. Just to talk a little bit about where we are in the process and timeline for going forward, is we started here with our feasibility assessment. As we've reported to you, we think there is an opportunity to move forward with an election. The next step, if you give us direction to do so, is to develop and implement an informational communication process. The school district can't advocate for the passage of a parcel tax measure, but you can educate and inform your public about your budget realities and how the parcel tax fits into that. You saw the power of just explaining to voters that the parcel tax represents a quarter of your budget, and if that were to go away, the consequences that would be associated with that. That's the type of informational story we need to make sure people understand, given the impending expiration of the parcel tax. In addition to that awareness-building effort, we would also take what we've learned from the survey, work with your legal counsel to develop the resolution that would put this measure on the ballot. The deadline to qualify for the June twenty twenty-six ballot, if we choose that timing, is March sixth. That's eighty-eight days prior to Election Day. That's the statutory deadline. So we would be looking to bring the resolution back to you at your January board meeting for review and feedback, and then look for adoption at your February thirteenth board meeting. So we're out in front of that eighty-eight-day deadline. So, and then at that point, the process gets handed off to an independent campaign committee. You know, these numbers are strong. We're in the low seventies. But, you know, no slam dunk, no parcel tax requiring two-thirds ever is. So we're going to have to be able to mount a strong advocacy campaign. But at that point, we can't use district resources, no district money. So that independent campaign, just like we did for the Measure G bond, has to raise private funds, recruit volunteers to mount that advocacy effort between that March and June timeframe. So that's what we're looking at coming up, and happy to answer any questions you have.
I just want to make sure, this is not a question, but do people know that the fifteen hundred dollar we are asking is actually the amount they're already paying because of the built-in inflation? I'm not sure if that was communicated.
I mean, if you want to go back to the ballot question, I think, you know, in any measure like this, legally, we're allotted seventy-five words to describe the measure. And, you know, I think we're fairly clear here that we're talking about reauthorizing the expiring school parcel tax at the current rate of fifteen-twenty.
Yeah.
Right? I think that conveys that what they're already paying, and potentially restoring the recently expired $234 per parcel.
Yeah, I was just concerned about one comment on the negative, like they're asking for more than the last one, which was nine hundred and fifty-two dollars. Like, so the perception among some people seems to be that we're asking for a lot more than what they're paying for.
Right.
That concerned me.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, the number-one negative here has to do with the overall cost and the fact that the district also recently passed a bond. So that's the kind of thing we have to just be prepared for in our communications. We have to be able to answer those questions, explain how the inflation adjustment works. Yeah.
Any other questions? Oh, go ahead.
So I don't know much about your work. Did you work with Ross Valley?
I did work for Ross Valley briefly in the preparation of their measure for the ballot, but we were not involved in their campaign.
Okay, so, oh, sorry.
Because we know that that went surprisingly bad. And can you speak a little bit about the Coalition for Sensible Taxpayers and Mimi Willard and your experience with her? And how, you know, if you've thought about strategies for making sure that narrative doesn't start to cloud the positive? Because that's what I notice has been effective. And I have some follow-up questions. So how do I frame this, though, to understand? How do we share the positive? Why don't you help me frame that question?
I think when you were testing, you tested on questions about cost and the types of issues that groups such as cost might be advocating around. Can you maybe address how those messages worked, if they were effective, not effective? And if there was a campaign, how, you know, would it need to tackle those types of messages to ensure it reached the threshold?
Sure. Certainly, that was contemplated in the preparation of the survey. So, and I've done virtually every parcel tax and bond measure in Marin County over the last twenty years. And so we've certainly seen the type of campaigning that that organization has done. And so we anticipated some of the things they might say over the course of a campaign because we wanted to pressure-test the proposal and see if, you know, our support stands up in the face of that type of argument. You raised Ross Valley. I do, I want to say that it's a little bit of an outlier of an example for a couple of reasons. One is, I saw their pre-election polling. They actually outperformed their polling. So I don't, a lot of people weren't actually that surprised that that measure went down, and it was an uphill battle from the get-go. They also made a decision to try to change the fundamental methodology of their parcel tax from a flat-rate structure to a square-footed structure. And that raised a lot of questions, and I think a lot of confusion as well. And some of the larger property owners were asking tough questions, too. I feel much more comfortable with the direction we're looking at here, which is preserving the methodology that people are used to. It's been in place since nineteen eighty-seven. And really just, you know, amending that and extending that. I think we'll face less resistance and fewer questions if we keep more elements similar.
Oh, sorry, real quick. So regarding the reasons for no, like both the, kind of the large positives and the large negatives about perceiving how the district's doing and all this. Is that, does that typically align with Southern Marin, Central Southern Marin County in general? Because you've polled all the other Marin County, you know, districts. And so I'm just wondering, do those kind of themes sort of align in general? And then the percentages as well?
I was at Kenfield's board meeting on Tuesday night presenting poll results, and their arguments pro and con looked very similar to yours.
Okay.
So question for you. I look at the last parcel tax poll, and that polled the higher at sixty-six percent and only got like barely past that sixty-seven percent. I mean, should we be worried right now at sixty-four percent? Because that sixty-six percent is still higher than our sixty-four.
Do you want to come out?
Sure. One thing to keep in mind is there's a five, around a five percentage point margin of error. So there's no statistical difference between sixty-four and sixty-six. So it's same kind of vicinity. Yeah.
Sixty-seven percent, we should be worried.
And also, these, the results that are on this slide is just the first ballot question in the survey, right? And then you saw the progression over the course of our survey, where we start at sixty-four, we go up to seventy-two, and then we kind of settle at seventy. So to get kind of a complete picture, we would have to look at where were we at in all three of the ballot tests in those prior surveys as well? Because, you know, really what we want to know is where are voters after they've heard the story?
Other question, you said thirty-four percent of folks surveyed, four hundred, said, you know, high tax burden, thirty-four percent of them, and mismanagement inefficiencies of funds, thirty-two percent. Do you have any data on the demographics of those people, their age? Are they private school, public school? Can you tell us more about those people?
We certainly can. We have a full set of cross tabs. So we can follow up with that information. But one thing to make sure, to point out is that it's thirty-four percent of one hundred and thirty-five. So it's only thirty-four percent among the third of respondents who said they would vote no on the measure. So it's much smaller than a third of all respondents.
I see. So, okay, so thirty-four percent didn't say no. I guess I misunderstood that. Oh, just ten percent cared about that question?
Question, just a follow-up, people said they would vote no on the parcel tax.
I see.
Thirty-four percent of the people that said no
Right.
offered those responses.
I see. So I missed, and thirty, so can you tell me about the thirty-four percent of people that just said no?
Yes, absolutely. We can follow up with some cross-tab information on that.
Okay, that would be great. Because I think for us, in terms of, I'd be interested in those people whoever support, you know, going out and campaigning, which we would not be doing, to understand the demographic difference in Mill Valley, which may be complementary to other communities. But off the top of your head, do you know how many folks over sixty-five live in Mill Valley? I'm just wondering, because I think there is a, there's a unique dist in Mill Valley, age-related, maybe? I don't know. Would that be true?
Yeah, well, I mean, I noticed while Jessica's pulling up the data, eighty percent of the registered voters in your district do not have a child in your school district. So if that's an indication of how the age skews, right?
Around thirty percent are seniors.
Thirty, thirty percent of the eighty percent are seniors?
Sorry, thirty percent of registered voters are seniors.
Oh, that's interesting. So thirty percent are seniors.
How do you define senior?
Sixty-five percent.
We get like those circles.
We're just going to focus on campaigning. Door to door to door to door to door.
Well, it's interesting because is that consistent with other districts in Marin? Eighty percent don't have children in our public schools?
It's different in Santa Fel and Marin, but in Southern Marin, that's pretty consistent, true.
Interesting. That, yeah, that tells you something. That's really important information for whoever's going to campaign for us to know.
For parcel tax, there's an optional exemption available for people over the age of sixty-five. So, you know, if you're on a fixed income and you feel that this measure's a burden, that exemption is available.
So of those four hundred that you talked to, do you know what percent are in that eighty percent that don't have children in our district?
Right, so roughly eighteen percent of our respondents have kids in the Mill Valley School District.
Well, just eighteen of the four hundred?
That's good. So her grouping is reflecting the actual population.
And remember that of the eighty percent that are registered voters that aren't district parents, they might be high school parents now, their kids might be in college. They were at one point district parents, but they're not. but they're not actively district parents. Like me, I'm not an active district parent anymore either, so.
Well, see, I found that fascinating, I thought that high, maybe people just were trying to be, I just thought that that would be a higher number, that they'd be like, oh, you know, but I think people think that. But I was surprised that it felt to me, I was surprised it was not a higher number.
Yeah, and, you know, there's a lot of, you know, people that formerly had kids in the school district and they're willing to pay it forward because they remember when the community supported their kids at the time. And, you know, you're fortunate that this is generally a pro-public education community, regardless of whether you have kids in, in schools.
Thank you.
Um, any other questions or anything? Well, thank you, this was very, very informative.
Thank you so much.
Really appreciate all the, all the information.
Thank you, welcome back, Andrew.
And yeah, that you have them on your team.
Andrew's going to be the poster boy of this campaign.
Yep.
Yep.
Kudos to you.
I know.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, I know.
People.
People.
Adults.
Okay, yes, yes. Former students, children who have now become members of society.
Contributing members of society. All right, we are moving on to future board items.
Did want to capture again, as I said last time, the November and December agendas are going to be pretty full. In November, we will be looking at determining the next steps for transitional kindergarten and I believe there's strong board support for that. So should we reinstate TK at our November board meeting? We would start enrollment of transitional kindergarten immediately. We also need to look at our budget in relation to that decision. So I'm going to ask Paula to bring forward the analysis of where the 1.8 million dollars that we need to address if we do reinstate transitional kindergarten, because I think that's a relevant conversation for you to have before making that decision. Although again, I think it's important that we proceed with transitional kindergarten. And then, as you know, we will be moving into December with the certification of our EIR and project selection. So those months and the first interim report. So I think those meetings will be fairly full, just as a heads up.
Any other things now for future board items? What about trustee?
I just, you know, can you just help me again? They presented, when is this coming back for us to deliberate? I'm sorry, I missed that piece.
It will come back in January for consideration of language.
Thank you.
Between now and then, we'll do some crafting and also some outreach to local groups. And then in February, you will approve the resolution language. And then in March, it would, I mean, the, the measure language. And then in March, we would need to have it on the ballot and proceed with the campaign.
Thank you.
Board reports, trustees?
Yeah. So I went to the Tam Valley PTO, I participated in Zoom for Tam Valley PTA. And it's been, I've been really surprised that the PTA participation increased from about seventy families two, three years ago to now I think the majority of Tam Valley families are in the PTA now and they've already finished funding. So I, I've been shocked by, you know, how many more people are participating at Tam Valley PTA.
Great.
Yeah.
Um, anyone else, any other trustee reports? You don't have to.
I'll just throw in, I set aside some time to go to both Edna and the middle school for site visits. Tackled all grades as well, or six and, all of sixth and seventh, as well as all, everything in the portables with music and arts and it.
They're making us look really bad on that, I don't get to.
I know what I, what I'm trying to say is it was really fantastic getting to see the kids and teachers in action, seeing, you know, how engaged they are. And, and I'm excited to come back and, you know, round out with eighth grade. But, and, you know, fun enough, my kids still like to see me when I come to their school, so.
Not mine.
So I'll take it, but, but it was really awesome. And then going to the elementary school, started out with TK and going and having conversations with four-year-olds. I, it just filled, filled, filled my bucket. But just really fantastic getting to see everybody in action. And I feel like the general message from the teachers also is that things feel calmer and more settled at this point in the year where like usually it's like, oh, after, you know, after, after Halloween is kind of the point when everybody settles in. And teachers seemed excited about CKLA, there's a lot more comfort with this year after having gone through it. You know, it, it was just really fantastic. So, you know, I would recommend, should you have the time and get the chance to, to check out the action in the classrooms and go visit your kids' classroom and see how, how they, how they like that.
Oh, no, I, I enjoy having Dr. Kaufman visit. I have two shy ones who avoid eye contact and then the other wants to do a performance. So it's a good little mix of.
I'm trying to scout all three of your kids here at the middle school, but so far they've eluded me. Yours, I find, because they find me, but the other ones.
Mine, mine doesn't want to.
I know. I try not to call them out.
Oh, you should.
I know, I go regularly, so if anyone wants to contact, well, it would be Anna, but Anna will be returning. So Suter, Monica, I try to hold mornings to visit schools unless I'm writing staff reports for the PEA or the EIR, which seems to be what I've done this week. So anyone who wants to join me, just tag along, usually it's eight-thirty to nine-thirty. So yeah, just, just email and get some.
Getting, getting to see the kids in the district and just a refresher on like why we do what we do.
The kindergartners at Tam Valley, oh, they were like, I love you. And I was like, I don't want to go back to my office.
Yeah, I'll.
Don't be, please.
I'll come with you.
Okay, it's so, it's so good, it's just.
Yeah, I'm touring middle school next week.
Next week, yeah.
How do I win ice stuff?
Just email me.
Middle school and, yeah, I like to do Tam Valley and.
You know, the way to do it is to email the principal and just say, here's some times I'm available. And then they'll either go with you or just send you on your way, so.
I'm doing Wednesday, I think, one, one-thirty, one or one-thirty, so one other person can go. But I don't know if you were going to, I, I talked to you originally, so, Michelle. But, so whoever, I'm just saying, we can't, three of us can't do it, so.
Yeah. Either way, but I like to do Tam Valley. Now that my son is out, I haven't been to that school.
Yeah, it's fun to go back when you don't have the distraction of your child and, you know, or the energy of your.
We had Mad Dash today, we've had movie night. We had Gala tomorrow, yeah, we got a lot of fun. It's actually a really fun time in, I feel like, PTA land, probably not for all the PTA people who are trying to organize all these things. But for those of us who get to go, it's really fun. And, you know, getting, you know, the kids are so excited to be running their laps and all the other movie nights and all the other good stuff, so it's fun.
Walkathon.
Okay, I'll invite you next year, I'll invite you next year.
I know.
I'll, I'll go to Walkathon at whatever.
There was supposed to be some bionic run too, that I never found out about from the, the middle school.
It's coming, it's coming up, it's not, it hasn't happened yet. There's going to be an assembly and then maybe in November is the.
Fun to go, team.
It is fun how many activities, you know, I will say, going from like the small elementary and being the parent who was very nervous about a large middle school. It has been so just, it's been a really great experience from just academically, socially, like there's so many clubs and they're like figuring it all out. And I don't know how they get to the classes on time, because I could not do that during open house. But, you know, they're just, they seem to be having a really great time, which is so wonderful.
Are you making a plug for our middle school organization?
Yes.
Six through eight?
It's been great, it's been, I will say, I was one of those who was like, you want my baby to go where?
Right.
Um, but it's been great, he's been loving it and it's, you know, you're right, it wasn't scary.
I'll add, I, I feel like my children were both very, very supportive in all through elementary and middle school, more supportive than they are now, so, you know, it's a testament to our teachers.
Great district, great district.
Oh, with that, I think we will adjourn at eight-twenty-three, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, thank you. I went, I went for lunch.
We'll be finished, our filming will get stupid.